Greetings, everyone, and thank you so much for being here today and joining us for this important conversation on building an inclusive economy in the Monterey Bay region. Joining us today are Dr. Chris Benner and Gabriela Alvarez from the UC Santa Cruz Institute for Social Transformation. Today, Dr. Benner will go over some highlights and data points found within the report, and then we will break out into smaller groups to have personal discussions, and then we'll reconvene as a group to discuss anything that came up in those breakout rooms. So first and foremost, a little bit about MBAP. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit founded in 2015 with the mission to improve the economic health and quality of life in the Monterey Bay region. We do that with these pillars in mind and driving any of the action that we take specific to these three initiatives. We focus on economic and workforce development, broadband and digital equity, and housing. And I know that Dr. Benner's data and report today will focus on some of these indicators falling within these sections. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Dr. Chris Benner. He is the Director for the UC Santa Cruz Institute for Social Transformation and the Everett Program for Technology and Social Change, and he's the Chair for the Dorothy Everett Global Information and Social Entrepreneurship. So with that said, Dr. Benner, I will stop my share and turn it over to you.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Jessica, and thank you for all of you for coming today, for your work in the region, for your interest and caring about the issues that we'll be talking about today. Before I get into introducing the report itself, and yeah, talking about some of the findings and the purpose of it and moving to the small group discussions, I always like to start with getting a little better sense of who's in the room. And so I want to, yeah, do a bit of introductions. You've heard me, you know, my name is Chris Benner. I'm a faculty member at UC Santa Cruz and one of the authors of the report. The other author is here, Gabby Alvarez, but I'll have her introduce herself in just a second. But as we're going around and doing the introductions, I'd love to hear, you know, your name, pronouns, if you want to share that, mine are he/him. If you're here with an organization or representing an organization, let us know that. And then, you know, one thing that you either hope to get out of the discussion today or one reason that brought you here today. So before moving to that, Gabby, would you please introduce yourself briefly?
Sounds great. Hi, everybody. My name is Gabriela Alvarez. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a research specialist, as Chris mentioned, with the UC Santa Cruz Institute for Social Transformation, and I'm a proud co-author of this report that we're going to be discussing today. So that's why I'm here, really excited to hear what everybody has to say and their thoughts. And how about I pass it along and we can popcorn, I'll pass to Ned.
My name is Ned LeBlond. I'm the Managing Director for the Institute for Social Transformation at UC Santa Cruz. I work with Chris and Gabby closely. I didn't work on this report, but I do help them implement the strategic vision of the institute and help keep our many projects moving forward and thinking through what kind of strategic conversations we can have to have communities really engaged in research across the region and the globe. And I'm just going to pass it to Jessica, which is on my Zoom screen next to me.
Oh, that might be passing it back to me. So again, I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Marketing and Communications and Events Manager for MBAP and happy to be here with all of you today.
I mean, I'll just call on people to make it quicker, maybe Eric Mora, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. My name is Eric Mora. My pronouns are he/him/ee, and I'm a Policy Analyst with the Office of Monterey County Supervisor, when you would ask you.
And one thing that brings you here today?
Well, I think this is a topic that's really, you know, this doesn't affect my work, but I live in this region, right? So I think I'm really interested in seeing an economy that's equitable, that is inclusive and uplifts all. So I think I'm just very interested in the topic.
Awesome. Rose?
Good morning, everyone. I have remodeling going on in my background, so I'm going to stay muted most of the time. My name is Rose Filicetti, and I'm the ED of Nonprofit Connection, Santa Cruz County. Basically, a membership organization for nonprofits across all sectors. I'm here because I'm really interested in collaboration amongst business, nonprofits, and government in terms of making it a better economy for all.
Thank you. Zav Hirschfield?
Sorry, good morning. Hi, my name is Zav Hirschfield, pronouns are they, they, or they. I'm with Santa Cruz Community Ventures, specifically the Futuro Program. And I'm here because the main part of our work is supporting the development of worker-owned businesses in the Central Coast region, and we think that that is a really key element of an inclusive economy. So I'm here to learn more about a fine-grained image of what's going on in the region. So thank you for putting this on.
Linda?
Hi, my name is Linda McGlone, and I use she/her pronouns. I work for MBAP, and I'm here again because I really appreciated the data that you presented, excuse me, in Salinas. And so I'm back for more. Thank you.
Great. And we'll go on to another MBAP staff. Madhur?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Mahnuar. I'm the Economic and Community Development Manager, and I'm here to learn and happy to be here and meet all of you.
And another Ventures, Brenda?
Hi, everybody. My name is Brenda. I am a Program Coordinator with Ventures. I work side by side with Zav. So yeah, like he, like they mentioned, this work really directly relates to what we're working on. So I'm really just here to learn, and I've heard that this presentation was great in person. So I missed it, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Hello, everybody. Shannon Castro, Monterey County Behavioral Health. I am the MHSA Coordinator and pronouns she/her. And I'm here because I'm very interested in this topic and learning about this report.
Great. And Kaki?
Good morning, everyone. My pronouns are she/her, Kaki Restmore. I'm an independent consultant in the region and presently working with the Salinas Inclusive Economic Development Initiative. Have a real long-term interest in inclusive economies and economic development. So looking forward to where we go.
Thank you. John?
Yes, my name is John Freeman, he, and I'm a City Council Member for City San Juan Batista, and I'm just interested in economic development for San Bernardino County of any size and shape, especially inclusive ones. Thank you.
Melanie?
Good morning. Melanie Wong with California Food Policy Council. My pronouns are she, ella, and I am here because I wanted to hear, go to the font and hear directly from Professor Benner about this. And I have been convening a group of the six Central Coast Counties for a little over a year now. We're focused on resilient food systems and specifically on food enterprise and really wanting to be more involved in economic development initiatives. And have, we've, you know, are planning to adopt solidarity economics as a framework for collaboration. And I'm just come back from meeting with our Southern California region Food Councils in Long Beach, in a summit in Long Beach over four days, carried that message down there. They are interested as well, and the funders that we met with to talk more about this in relation to collaborations that are co-op instead of competition, cooperative businesses, more food enterprises. So I'm excited to be here today.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is it Lise Dubois?
Yeah, Lee Dubois. I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Santa Cruz County. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm interested in the role that accessible and affordable childcare plays in supporting an inclusive economy and as well as workforce readiness and development for our young people.
Awesome. Thank you. And Aleah, I don't know if you can unmute yourself?
Hi, my name is Aleah. I'm a Policy and Research Associate for MBAP. My pronouns are she/her. I work alongside Mahnuar, Jessica, and Linda, and I'm here to, I'm here to learn.
Thank you. And is it Lady Frey? Are you there? Are you able to unmute?
Yes. Hi, I'm Lady Frey. I'm the Project Manager for the Uplift Central Coast Coalition, and we work closely with Mahnuar and Aleah, and I'm happy to be here to learn more about what is happening in the Northern Region. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Gabriela Chavez?
Hello, my name is Gabriela Lopez Chavez, pronouns are she/her/ella. I'm a member of the Uplift Northern Subcommittee Region, Northern Region Subcommittee, and I'm also have had the pleasure of learning about solidarity economics and inclusive economy through Dr. Benner's work. So I'm just excited to be here again.
Thanks. And did I miss anyone? Thank God, everyone. Good. Well, thank you all for, yeah, spending your precious time with us here today. And I'm going to share my screen, if I can hopefully do that. And are you all seeing the full slide there? Does that look okay? Great. And so, yeah, just to kind of give you a sense of where we're going with this presentation, there'll be a bit of work at the beginning, which is kind of the framework and why we're doing this report and what we hope it contributes to the region. Then I'll kind of go through the data itself and some of the more specific findings that are not everything that's in the report, but what we thought were sort of the most important things to lift up. And then really want to have time for you all to talk with each other. We'll do some breakout rooms in the small groups of two or three to really talk about that work and then come back and debrief together. If there is anything in what I'm presenting as we're going along that you really want to, you know, ask a question about or is not clear or, you know, kind of sparks something immediate in the moment, please feel free to jump in, and I will try and keep track. I can see all of your screens down below on my second screen and, you know, raise a hand and I'll try and see it there. Or if I'm not paying enough attention, feel free to just jump in and interrupt, and we'll have this as interactive as we can. But just a little bit of background, you know, the title of this report is all about how do we build an inclusive economy in the Monterey Bay region, and it's really looking at the three county region. There's obviously values that are reflected in that goal. And I'm assuming you're here that you all share those values on some level. But part of why that's in the goal is because there is lots and lots and lots of really rigorous economic research that shows that those places, both kind of regions and countries on a global scale, that are more inclusive and more equitable on multiple dimensions, do better in traditional metrics of economic success, you know, growth and economic output, as well as our more inclusive societies and more equitable societies. And it's something that we don't hear about a lot in traditional economic development strategies, where equity is seen as a, you know, nice to have rather than, you know, a central part of our economic strategies. And part of what we're hoping to lift up in putting that in the title and the frameworks there and some of the references is that, in fact, we need to be thinking about promoting inclusivity as a central economic development goal that results in better long-term economic outcomes. It leads to greater innovation. It leads to greater ability to be resilient in the face of the ups and downs of economic cycles. And it leads to a greater mobilization of, you know, human capital and motivation and innovation, as well as less political conflict, which just makes it much easier for our economy to do well. And that's captured, some of you have mentioned this framework, Solidarity Economics, which we put together. And that is a book that has references to, you know, much of that academic research, but there are also comic books, videos, other ways of really trying to popularize that work. But part of the background of this report also comes from a previous book that I did with Manuel Pastor called Equity, Growth, and Community, which was really focused specifically on metropolitan regions in the US and looking at the largest 200 metropolitan regions in the US in both quantitative and qualitative dimensions and trying to figure out in those places that are more successful at linking equity and growth and really priorities and prioritizing inclusive economic growth, how have they been able to do that? You know, why are they successful and how? And there's, it's a great book. You can get it free, actually, too, to download it. It's University of California Press. But the key insight that comes out of it, and the argument we're trying to make, is the importance of diverse knowledge communities. In the case studies we look at and in the quantitative data, there are signs that those places that have some set of institutions that bring together people across different constituencies, you know, central cities and suburbs and rural areas, public sector, private sector, nonprofit community, across race, across place, coming together to talk about the future of the region and priorities and challenges in the region and developing some kind of collective understanding of that, driven by data, that those places who have those set of institutions seem to do better. And part of why the data is important is it can drive discussions in ways that get beyond our preconceived notions, ideologies, frameworks, et cetera, that, you know, we all have in our silos that we work in, and helps us then learn from each other and see the value of that collective knowledge and collective work. So if nothing else comes out of this report besides conversations amongst all of you and people like you in the region, it will be successful in our view. So that's really the goal. There is more data available about this region than any of us can absorb. You know, it's an overwhelming amount of data in the world. And so part of what we're trying to figure out is how to present sort of a parsimonious but important and comprehensive level of data that gives a picture, you know, not of the latest quarter or the latest data, the latest economic cycle, but the longer term trend. You know, the waters in which we swim, you know, the wind blowing in the directions, what do we need to be aware of? And so what we've tried to do is put these indicators that are in the report in this framework that is helping us, we hope, think through the different dimensions of an inclusive economy. That, you know, of course, income inequality, we pay a lot of attention to, and that's important. But there are many other dimensions of inclusion that we should be thinking about and are important for our economic development strategies. And this framework was developed originally in partnership with the Rockefeller Foundation. It was developed in part because we wanted to be sure that there was data available in each of these categories at a local level, a regional level, a national level, and we sort of test drove it in countries around the world. And it's not perfect. Nothing's perfect. And of course, data only presents a partial picture. We also need, you know, a lot more nuanced understanding of people's lives and economic opportunity in the region. But we think it's a pretty good, you know, way of thinking about it. And these five dimensions, I think, are really critical ways of thinking about inclusivity. You know, we should have an equitable economy. And by equitable, you know, the ability to move up over time is a critical part of that. And that's both people in their own careers, that, you know, you have increasing income as you get more experience and more knowledge. But it's also intergenerationally that, you know, we hope children are able to do better than parents. And those of us who are parents really hope our children do better than us. And so we really want to think about that. And when we think about inequality, we want to be paying attention not just to income, but also particularly to wealth, to assets, to homeownership, to, you know, intergenerational wealth as part of that, and equal access to, you know, the public goods and ecosystem services. We want to have an economy that's participatory, where decision-making about resource allocation and investments are made in ways that are transparent, that involve, you know, important constituencies in the region, and then decision-makers are accountable. And also recognizing that people participate in our economy, not just as workers, but also as business owners. And, you know, many people are entrepreneurs, and that's everything from small business to large business, and we want to be looking at the characteristics there. And then we all are consumers. And what does that mean in terms of, you know, the ways that housing, for instance, in our region, takes up so much of the family budget, household budget, that makes it very hard to then consume other basic needs and necessities? So that's another thing. And then, given the importance of technology in access in our society, and that's both work access, but access in civic engagement and public life and with others, we want to make sure also that there's, everyone's able to participate in the broadband infrastructure and have access to key technologies. As much as we think traditional economic metrics that just focus on growth, like GDP, are limited, we do think it's important to be thinking about growing as an economy. We want to be improving material well-being over time and have important metrics of people's ability to have, you know, not just the basic necessities of life, but, you know, the nice things that everyone wants. And so part of that is looking at increasing good jobs and good work opportunities and that material well-being and really thinking about the structure of our economy over time that we're moving into sectors and industries that pay higher wages, that we're improving jobs in all sectors over time. So that's part of what we're looking at. We want to be thinking about sustainability in our economy. That's really an essential development or essential component of inclusivity. And there's kind of two key dimensions of that sustainable element, one of which is that we want to be able to sustain our economy over a long time period. And part of that is thinking about long-term decision-making. You know, no one wants to be in a boom and bust cycle. And actually, many regions of this country that are dependent on resource extraction, you know, minerals and mining, like that's a very typical pattern of boom and bust because you're getting the, you know, key growth in the moment. And we want to be sure, you know, we're not just chasing the next quarterly returns as a regional economy and companies in the region, but are really trying to build growth over a long-term timeframe. But of course, the other part of that is our environmental health and that we are, you know, not just sustaining environmental resources, but regenerating, you know, investing in ecological health over time. And then the final category is stability, that, you know, again, this boom and bust cycle of some economies. You know, one, actually, economies that have that boom and bust cycle, like they may grow very fast for a short period of time, but then have the crash. And the impacts of recessions and crashes last decades in many cases. Actually, you can see that in the earnings of people who moved into the labor market, for instance, right after the Great Recession here in the US in 2008, 2009, still have lower earnings, you know, 10 years later, 15 years later, than people who were able to move out into the labor market at a time of economic growth. So if we can have more stable growth, that's super helpful. And it's also important for both people and companies to have confidence in economic growth and stability for investment decisions, to have the, you know, confidence to invest in new enterprises and new businesses, the confidence and ability to save for college education for kids, for home purchases, for retirement over time, and being resilient to those shocks and stress of economic cycles. So that's the framework, and the data kind of fits into those categories, and I'll run through it in that way. Before I jump into the data itself, are there any questions on this framework? Comments, any input? Yeah, Eric, I see your hands.
Hey, Chris. Thank you so much. You know, I really love this presentation. I think several of us heard it during the Salinas Inclusive Economic Development Initiative. And I'm wondering, you know, you mentioned in the beginning that, you know, most of us on the call are of the same, are in kind of the same wavelength, but thinking about my industry, government, right, local government, that is, have you experienced any participation from, like, you know, there's several people who have like the title of like Economic Development Managers from both the cities and the counties, and it's also budget season, right? So it's like, you know, it's such a great time to be reminded of the importance of these values. Has there been an opportunity for you to interface with our local government representatives who are making these decisions?
Yeah, absolutely. And I should say, we do have an advisory committee of people who gave feedback on the report, and that's listed in the report itself and includes several people directly involved in public sector economic development strategies. And we've had elected officials come to many of these community study sessions, mostly people from the offices of elected officials rather than elected officials themselves. But, you know, but, you know, many people from those offices, so there's a clear interest in that. And that raises one point here that I think is really important is that sometimes people frame our economy as separate from the public sector. And I think that is really misunderstanding our economy. You know, if you think of an economy as a system that societies create to produce the goods and services that people need and want, you know, government is an essential part of those set of processes and helping to ensure, you know, basic provision of social services is a key part of that, but also in terms of investment in research and development and technologies. And people who, you know, I study Silicon Valley and many other people do too. And it's really clear that public sector investment in basic research is at the core of nearly all of the technologies that have developed into technology projects. There's a great study about the iPhone. I know I have an iPhone. It's not an Apple endorsement here. If you have Android phones, awesome, but you should have a cell phone. But everything, you know, everything from the GPS system to, you know, the semiconductors, to the voice recognition system, to the glass, all has its origins in public sector investment. And of course, you need the private sector to help commercialize that and move ahead. But, you know, the collaboration and communication and coordination between public and private sector is, I think, what's important. And also recognizing, by the way, that there are certain public sector investments that, you know, I think are problematic and wasteful and, you know, I'm not saying that everything public sector is good. We need to be looking at some of those challenges, but it's very much part of our economy. So it's essential then. Kaki, I see your hand, too.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Chris. This is, this is great to be looking at this again. And I'm curious about a couple of things. I mean, maybe you said this and I somehow missed it, but you have two vertical columns on the right-hand side there that say experiences of marginalized populations and distributions of power. And I'm wondering if those are some of the measurements that go across all of these or what the purpose of those are there? And then also, in that first sector, the equitable thing that things are equitable, it talks about equal access to public goods and ecosystem services. And often when we talk about equity, we talk about people having access in a way that allows them to meet their goals. So if somebody, you know, who already lives in a town with great streets, gets $100,000 worth of street repairs, that, in a town that has, you know, a million potholes, gets $100,000 worth of street repairs, that's, that might be equal access to public goods, but it's not equitable access to public goods? So just was curious if you could comment on that?
Wow, I love your questions. Thank you. The first one is really important, and that was my oversight not to lift that up, is that across all of these indicators, we're really trying to disaggregate to have a clearer picture of those populations that are marginalized. And, you know, in our society, that's, you know, primarily around issues of gender, race, documentation, status, and all the historical structures that are connected to that. You know, in many other societies, it might be more about, you know, religious affiliation or others. And so part of that is also then trying to understand how that relates to power in our economy, that certain people have more access to resources, have more access to decision-making, and really trying to understand how that's shifting over time. So you'll see when we look at the data that we try and disaggregate on that point. And I really appreciate your point about the language of equal access versus equitable access. And I think we should change that. It's a good point. I hope people understand that difference is that, you know, if we want to have a society with, you know, a level playing field where, you know, effort is rewarded and, you know, we can really understand where, you know, investment needs to happen, those places that have been historically neglected and starting from, you know, a more disadvantaged position, we need to invest more in those places. And there's a concept developed originally by John Powell, who's a UC Berkeley professor now, of targeted universalism that I really like. And the notion is, yeah, in your example, we should all have good, safe streets in our neighborhood. That's a universal goal. That's a universal goal. But to get there might require investing more in targeted neighborhoods who have greater challenges to get into that goal. We should all be able to live in healthy bodies. That might require investing more in public health in neighborhoods that face greater health challenges. But having that targeted universalism is really important. Any other questions, comments before we move into the data? All right. Well, before we actually get to the data, this is not a mystery novel. The conclusions I want to make sure you have upfront. And you'll begin to see how the data points to that, that, you know, how are we doing in each of these categories? Well, we have high levels of inequality in this region. But what was interesting in putting the data together is it hasn't gotten worse. We're actually pretty stable in this region around levels of income inequality, where the state has gotten more unequal in the time that we're looking at for a variety of different reasons. You know, education was one of the key sectors we'll look at and related to mobility over time. And we are improving educational outcomes across all race and gender categories. But there are really stark racial inequalities in education that we think are an important priority. In participation, you know, eligible voter turnout is, you know, actually higher than some places in the country, but it's lower than I think we'd ideally like to see, although it has been improving over the last decade or so for, you know, variety of reasons we can imagine, but it'd be interesting to talk about that. There are pretty high racial disparities in labor force participation and self-employment income. And that we're seeing a tick up in recent years in new business creation in the region. And some of that may be an effect of the pandemic and, you know, the massive layoffs that were part of that and people turning to, you know, small business and entrepreneurship is to try and substitute for that. But some of it is from a longer-term trend. So that's really interesting and I think encouraging. You know, overall, our economic output is up and labor productivity is up. And what's been interesting in the last three or four years is actually in certain parts of our region and certain sectors, some of the low-wage industries have actually had increasing wages over a time period. And that was in the national news a lot during kind of the second, third year of the pandemic, where the labor markets and service industries and many essential industries were really tight and employers were raising wages to attract people in, which is pretty interesting. No surprise to any of you, I'm sure that we have a very high housing costs in the region and housing cost burden. So as consumers, that's eating a lot of the consumer dollar and definitely some continued challenges in low-wage industry. The sustainable category is a place where, at least in the environmental area, the trends are all in the right direction. And that's encouraging. They are not as vast around some of the climate-related metrics as they need to be. And we kind of know that on a global scale as well, but we're encouraged there. And then in the stability category, that our regional economy remains more volatile than the state. Part of that, I think, is a function of a less diverse economy. We're very dependent in this region on, you know, agriculture, particularly in Monterey County, but not just Monterey County and the tourism and amenities division, industries. And so it's more volatile and there are some challenges for savings and risk mitigation associated with that. And as you're listening to me talk about the data moving forward, the questions that I hope you'll have in your mind, that'll be sort of the driving of the discussion, is what's particularly striking to you that you want to lift up and maybe talk more about to try and understand better? But also what's missing? You know, in your world and the work that you're doing and the things we should be paying attention to, what is missing that we should be looking at for future years? Our idea, by the way, is to produce this report, probably not every year because it's, you know, kind of a long-term trend, but maybe every two years. And so we'll take lots of suggestions about how to improve it and make it better the next time. But then the key thing is, you know, from both of those, what do you see as the priorities for our region going forward? Okay, so into the data. Ready for the data nerds out there to jump in and engage? So the first thing is really understanding who we are in a region and broad trends in the region. And overall, 62% of the population in the region are people of color. Monterey County here has the largest population in the region. And, you know, pretty vast majority of people of color. Santa Cruz is next, San Benito is much smaller. And there's been a slight population decline in the region between 2017 and 2022, the most recent data when we did the analysis. Some of that we think is driven by high housing costs in the region. But it'd be interesting to understand that better. One of the major challenges related to our demography in the region is what we call the racial generation gap. We have a very significant portion of our population in the region that are retired or nearing retirement elderly. That's that 65, sorry, 65 years and older population, which are disproportionately non-Hispanic white, 58% in the region as a whole. And then our future workforce, those youth under 18, which is really where, you know, we need to be paying attention to for our future economy. Only 15% are non-Hispanic white. 46% are Hispanic. What's really interesting, by the way, in the latest census, which gave people more options to select multiracial categories that many people who might have previously identified as a single race, we think now are entering more in multiracial categories. So that's a huge jump since the previous measurement of census of people who identify as all other races, which is mostly multiracial categories. So why is that, you know, we call the racial generation gap important? We know from studies around the country that those states and those regions where that racial generation gap is large tend to under-invest in resources for a youth population. You know, tend to under-invest in public education, tend to under-invest in child, early childhood care. And it's because, you know, those who are retired, who, you know, may have adult kids but not young kids, are not as aware of the priorities in that area. And so I think one challenge for us as a region is how do we build that intergenerational solidarity, connection, mutuality? And so many of the people who are, you know, older, they tend to be more active civically and more engaged. And how do we help kind of bridge that gap is an important priority. Here's the data on educational outcomes related to upward mobility. This is a complex table that I'll go through in a little more depth, but part of what we're seeing in each category is the difference in the proportion of the population that are 25 years or older with less than a high school degree. There are, of course, many different metrics you could look at with educational attainment, but being able to get out of high school is really a critical threshold to be able to get into vocational education, to be able to get somewhat better-paying jobs, maybe going on to higher education. So really getting everyone at least a high school degree in the region is a really important priority. And we can see between 2010 and 2021, in every category, this is improving. So that's the good news. The bad news is, of course, the disparity across the different race and gender categories. For non-Hispanic white, you know, down to 3%, 4% in the region of 25 years or older that don't have a high school degree. In the Latino population, you know, more than 40% of both men and women do not have a high school degree in the region. And that's going to be driven by two things. I mean, one is, you know, people growing up in the region who are not completing high school and so paying attention to the early childhood education improvements in our public schools is really important. But this is also adults moving into the region. And that is, says to me something about the importance of investing in adult education and training programs, investing in our community colleges and workforce development and vocational training systems to help kind of make up for that gap. And again, we know from other studies that as a proportion of total economic output, the amount that the US spends on adult education is one-tenth as much as many of other advanced industrial economies. Denmark's the highest, other Scandinavian ones, where they spend 10 times as much on a per capita basis in adult education. So that's really important. I'll also lift up here the difference between, in the African-American population in the region, the male population and the female population, that quite significantly higher proportion of black women in the region have not graduated from high school and really kind of understanding why that's the case and addressing that disparity, I think, is an important priority. This is the data that shows, you know, again, a measure of income inequality. It's the ratio of the income in the top 20%, you know, the top two out of 10 people compared to the bottom two out of 10. And, you know, it's 10 to one in our region, so 10 times the income in the top 20% compared to the bottom 20%. But that's been relatively flat over the last decade and actually come down a bit even before the pandemic coming down in 2018. Whereas the state as a whole has gotten more, I mean, starts off more unequal and has in fact gotten more unequal over time. So, you know, there's some good news there, but also some challenging news as part of that. I mentioned that looking at wealth inequality is as important as income inequality. And for the vast majority of people in the country, their primary source of assets is their home. For those who are able to get into homeownership and then be able to accumulate over time. And so looking at disparities in homeownership is really important. And for the non-Hispanic white and Asian population in our region, it's over 60, 65% of the population that are homeowners. And for the rest of the population, both Hispanic, Black, all others, it's closer to 45%. So that's a racial disparity there that I think is an important priority of how do we, you know, lower the barriers to homeownership and make homeownership more affordable? Moving now to the participatory dimension. You know, starting first with decision-making and thinking about decision-making involvement. Each color here, in this case, is a different county. So Monterey is blue, San Benito is red or rust, green is Santa Cruz County. And so part of what you can see is that Santa Cruz has the highest voter participation rate of all three counties. Monterey has the lowest. This is very correlated with the racial composition of other counties. And I'll show you a chart in just a second that shows the turnout of Latino populations versus the rest of the population. I should emphasize, by the way, that this is a measure that Gabby constructed that is the proportion of people who actually voted compared not to the eligible voting population or the registered voting population, which is what often you'll see, but it's actually the total population 18 years or older. And that, you know, again, reflects a value that I want to be explicit about that, you know, many people in our region, 18 years and older, are valued members of our communities and our neighborhoods and our work, but are undocumented or otherwise don't have the right to vote in our country. And we want to be thinking about what is the gap in representation and involvement for that as well. And so part of what we see is that, you know, in Monterey County, half the population votes, or voted in the last presidential election, which are the ones on the right. Somewhat higher in San Benito and Santa Cruz, 62%, 66%. But again, but what that means is that if a majority wins, that's 25 to 30% of the population that then is determining majority for the whole region. We'd love to see that higher over time. But part of what we can see in most cases, as you look from year to year to year in the midterm elections versus year to year in the presidential elections, is that voter turnout is increasing over time. And we think there may be a couple of different reasons for that. One is the state of California has improved access, vote by mail and, you know, other means of making it easy to register to vote. But then it may also have to do with the increasing partisanship in our political sphere. And, you know, maybe the more divided we get as a country, the more people engage in politics. It's a bit ironic that that may be the case, but I think it's something to think about. And again, these are the maps that I mentioned in Monterey County. Show on the right side here, the Hispanic voter turnout. In this case, this is the percentage of registered voters. So the disparity would be even higher if you looked at it in terms of the number of adults. But in those places that are red, less than 30% of registered voters turned out in the 2022 election. And compared to the rest of the population, the non-Hispanic voter turnout, again, where green is more than 70% and there's, you know, almost none that are in that lower than 30% category. So major challenges there we need to address in the region. Looking at labor force participation, and again, these are people either employed or looking for work. And, you know, the highest proportion is in the Hispanic Latino population. African-American population is significantly lower and really dropped in 2021. And some of that is the disproportionate impact we know the pandemic had on black communities in the country and this region as well. But that's, you know, really disturbing that less than 50% are in the labor market of those 16 years and older. These would be higher, by the way, if we looked at just the 16 to 64-year population. And that's something we may do in future years that, you know, there are some people who are retired and those are disproportionately non-Hispanic white. But we also wanted to look at labor force participation by documentation status. And the green bar are those who are undocumented and the blue is documented. And it just shows that, you know, both higher labor force participation, higher employed level amongst our undocumented population. And again, partially that's, you know, fewer opportunities for social support or help, income assistance otherwise. And part of it, of course, people are hard workers and migrants. You know, that's part of the migrant experience in this country that I think is important. We want to look at business participation. And again, this is part of what I mentioned earlier of increasing new business applications. Again, this is not a measure of business success. That's something, you know, we're trying to get better data on over time because a new business could then go out of business. But the fact that more people in each of the counties are registering new business is a sign of kind of entrepreneurship and new business creation that we could be focusing on, which is encouraging. When we try and get to that level of sort of the small business and really that starts with kind of people who are self-employed or small business and earning income from that. You know, we see some pretty high disparities that more of the non-Hispanic white population has some kind of self-employment income as consultants or small business, much less than other racial groups in the region. But there's a real strong growth in self-employment income by the Asian and Pacific Islander population in the region. I can't explain that. I don't know why and how that's the case. It's something, you know, it's one of those, hey, a future research topic, I want to understand it. But if any of you have deep ties in the Asian or Pacific Islander population in the region can help us understand that growth in self-employment income, I'd be super interested to understand that. Moving into the growth category, we do see increasing not just GDP, but this is GDP per capita, which is really an important measure of economic outcome for the number of people in the region, which again, has been, you know, inching up over time. That's an encouraging sign. We're still pretty significantly less than the state of California as a whole, both overall and in the pace of growth. So, you know, we'd like to see that growing faster, but things are moving in the right direction. Okay, I'm going to spend a little time on this chart. And we have this chart for San Benito County and Santa Cruz County as well. But what I'm going to be showing here is Monterey County because one is the largest county in the region and it shows some particularly interesting trends. These are bubbles. We call them a bubble chart. The size of the bubble is proportionate to the amount of employment in that industry. So in Monterey County, and by the way, this is just private industry, so it doesn't include public employment. If we included public employment, education would be a much larger bubble that we don't see so much here because there's a lot of public sector employment in education and public sector overall. But we wanted to try and understand what's happening in the private sector part of our economy. So agriculture is the largest industry. Accommodation and food services and retail trade is another cluster that's really important. Healthcare and social assistance is another hugely important employment sector in our region. In the report are several different versions of this kind of bubble chart that have different metrics on the vertical axis and the horizontal axis. And it's worth looking at when you're looking at the full report, what's being shown there. In this case, on the vertical axis, we're looking at the average annual pay, how much people are earning. And then showing the employment growth over time in that 2017 to 2022 period. So the higher the bubble is on the vertical axis, the higher the pay is, up to $120,000 at the top. And the more it is Um, and the more it is um to the right, um the faster it's growing to the left, uh the slower it's growing or it's more than shrinking. Okay, so here's here's the quiz for you all. Just make sure you're following. Uh, which quadrant? Would we want to be in? Do we want to be in upper left, upper right, lower right or lower left? And maybe I'll ask anyone to put that in the chat or unmute to let us all know which quadrant do you want to be in? Linda.
Upper left.
Upper left, this side.
Yes.
Rapidly.
Upper right, upper right.
Right, okay, good, there we go. Some people say we do want to be at other quadrants, but I want to.
Upper right, upper right.
So that's yeah, high paying industries that are growing rapidly. Uh, in Monterey, um our largest industry sector is uh lower left. Not ideally where we want to be. Um, low wage industries. Although you know, some people point out, I think perhaps that's right is. You know, if we're shrinking in those low wage industries. But growing in more high wage industries, like that would be a great sign, I think, that you know, we're structurally. Changing as economy to growing in high wage industries and shrinking in low wage industries. Um, so that's something to look at over time. Uh, but good, you all are following. And um, so that's a challenge that we have some low wage industries that are the largest bubbles. The next one is showing the percent pay growth during this time period. And this is what's interesting is that in the some of those low wage sectors, accommodation and food services and and retail trade. Um, wages actually went up pretty rapidly during that timeframe and these are um inflation adjusted. Wages, so that's um real purchasing power. Um, so that's really encouraging, like we'd love to see more um in that sector. That did not happen in agriculture where wages were um flat or even declining a little bit during this this time period, even though those are. Very clearly uh essential workers. So that's, you know, again, an issue that we should be thinking about and paying attention to in the region. Uh, again, in this category of trying to get a picture of like, are we increasing good jobs in the region? Um, really trying to look at those people who are earning. Income levels that are not sufficient to cover basic. Expenses, of course, the poverty level is what people typically think of as, okay, that's what we're measuring poverty. For a variety of reasons, we don't need to get into here, although we could if people are interested. Our official poverty measure. Um, is pretty inadequate as a measure of of a living wage. Uh, and so you know, some people calculate complex living wage metrics, but one simple way to do that is about two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Uh, and so if we look in in that region, we actually improved over that time. Uh, and the percentage of people that were below the poverty level. Um, but still pretty high and again, the racial disparities are are pretty stark of, you know, almost fifty percent. Uh, the black population, you know, over a third of the Latino population in the region are are really, you know, in poverty, not just struggling. Um, economically, but below poverty and something we've really got to address. Um, housing costs, of course, are a huge issue in the region. We have some measures of that in the report. This is looking at, you know, thirty percent or more is considered affordable level to spend on housing. Um, over fifty percent of the people in our region um are spending. Unaffordable levels on housing. Um, including a quarter that are spending more than half their income um on housing. This is um rental households. Um, but it's pretty similar, even those that are homeowners. Um, you know, I mentioned that in looking at growing, we want to be looking at improved material well-being uh overall, not just. In dollar terms, but you know, our people's lives better. Um, you know, we'd love to have a survey locally of, you know, happiness and happiness indicators. Uh, we don't have that. Uh, people may know the gross national happiness index in Bhutan and that other places are. Um, measuring, which is a really complex measure of nine different categories of of material well-being and and people's lives. Um, that's one of the inspirations for this this work. But one way to get at this is really looking at life expectancy. Um, life expectancy ends up being sort of a cumulative. Effect of of a lot of different things over time, you know, it's access to adequate income, which gives access to healthcare and health insurance in many ways. Uh, it has uh, you know, neighborhood effects of if you're living in. Um, areas with high levels of pollution or, you know, high crime or other things that add stress and health problems overall. Anyway, so it's a it's a useful indirect indicator of overall material well-being. And part of what we see in our region is pretty big disparities by geography and that geography is is pretty associated with race as well that. You know, in areas of Salinas and and Marina, there's little pockets also in um, you know, parts of Santa Cruz County. Um, where the average life expectancy is a full decade. Ten years or more, less than in some of the parts of the country that have the highest um life expectancy. Um, so again, disparities that we'd love to see addressed on some ways. So moving into the sustainable category. Um, and again, this is where you'll see a a series of um indicators where things are all moving in the right direction. Um, one is, you know, trying to think about renewable energy sources and reducing our energy use related to our economic output. And so this is one measure of, you know, energy intensity, which is really a measure of of energy use. Uh, by county by year and it's going down um across all of our um counties. So um, that's useful over time. We're reducing our greenhouse gas emissions on a per capita basis um in our region. Actually, this is California as a whole. It's hard to get that data at just a county level, but California is reducing overall. Not as fast as we need to to address the climate change uh impacts that we're seeing really clearly. Um, but at least we're moving in the right direction. And that air pollution has dropped pretty dramatically in the last uh decade in in the region as measured by air particulate. Matter. Um, again, we could do more. Um, we all want to breathe cleaner air, but at least we're moving in in the right direction. And then um, a little bit about the stability, you know, the ability to predict the outcomes of economic decisions. Um, the chart's a little complicated to read, so we put together a standard deviation, which is just a measure of of variation. Over time, uh, and you know, the higher the number, the more volatile or the more change there is year to year. Uh, in in this measure of GDP growth. And you know, it shows that all of our counties are higher than California as a whole, and that's primarily less diversification. In our in our economy as a as a whole. And then finally, uh, you know, we want to make sure that people in need. Are uh have access to resources to help them deal with challenges. Um, one measure of trying to get at that is how much of our county budgets are spent on. Um, social welfare and um social service programs. Uh, if numbers were declining because need was declining, that could be a good thing. Um, but if numbers are declining, needs not declining, uh, that's not such a good thing. Um, so this is just an indicator that shows that the proportion of county budgets spent on those categories of. Of social welfare and social services. Um, has declined in the last four or five years. Actually, in future studies, we're going to look a lot more specifically at. Some of the local government financing in our region because there are also tremendous disparities um at a city level. Between um different cities in our region and and access to resources. So that's um, you know, the highlights. There's lots more of data in the reports. There's um free versions to download off both the MBEP. Website and the um Institute for Social Transformation website. But what we'd love to do now um is have you break up into um breakout rooms and um. I think Jessica, if she's here, still can do that. Uh, or maybe someone from MBEP, I may have the power too, but uh before we do that, I wanted to just emphasize that, you know, this is quantitative data. It's available mostly from secondary sources, from government sources. It's, you know, it's really important and valuable and it's some of the best data that, you know, we have access to. But we also recognize like, that's only a window into. Um, what's going on in our region and you know, you all and others, you know, work on a day-to-day basis with um people and communities and neighborhoods in our region and those. You know, stories of people's lives that aren't captured in the data or things that may tell a different story when the data seems to show is is really important. Um, and you know, I'm uh, I'm an academic. I sit in a university. I don't want my research to just sit in the university. And you know, the stories and data and discussions are really only meaningful if they're guiding action. Um, helping to make change in the region and and shaping our strategies and and policies and and actions in the region. So we talk about DNA, the importance of linking data. And narratives and action and and that's when the data becomes meaningful and um the action can be informed by those strategies. Um, so uh, you know, maybe I'll ask you all to just take a couple minutes as Jessica's figuring out how to set up the um breakout rooms. Um, to just think a little bit about, you know, what is it from this presentation that um is striking to you? What's missing? What do you see as implications for the region? Um, and then we'll have you sharing pairs in the breakout rooms and we'll come back for the larger room discussion um after that. There we go. Thanks, everyone, for coming back. Um, I hope you had good discussions. Um, and Jessica, I might ask if you would kind of un spotlight me so we can, you know, all see everyone. Um, and just love to, you know, hear a little bit about your discussions, what. You know, stood out for you, what's missing, what do you see as priorities? And I actually want to go through each of the. The rooms to make sure everyone has space and time. So I'll start with room one. Which was um Aaliyah, Erica and John. Anyone from that? Room want to share what you all were talking about?
Go ahead, Erica. Let's see what we do. Okay, we ended up talking about several uh issues that I I felt were systemic in nature. Um, part of it was uh, we were talking about um. Issues with government inequality and and ways of receiving income and and I know that personally from being on the city council, San Juan Batista. And we traced that back to. Proposition thirteen and Erica brought out, we wanted to, people wanted to split. Commercial and industrial properties off from residential and apply a more fair. Tax rate to to those property owners who've had the same tax rate since nineteen seventy-eight, you know, and that's frankly, the same property owners. And. We talked about that inequality and how systemic and and then we went on to something called what I call digital equity. Uh, because I was involved in that a little bit and how we're building it up in San Juan Batista and in Holster and how we're offering. Um, high-speed broadband internet access to families whose children are on free and. Uh, low-cost lunches at the schools and so uh that's a program that's being run by the San Juan Batista Rotary Club. And the local ISP and it's just now starting to roll out, but it's working really great. So that's our hopeful sign for the.
That's great. Really good to hear that. Um, Erica or Aaliyah, do you want to add anything to what John said? And Erica, you might introduce yourself because we had everyone say at the beginning like who they are, organization and.
I sorry, I had another conflicting meeting, so I joined late. I'm Erica Katsky. I'm actually on staff at the Institute for Social Transformation. Um, working on the SEMI initiative, which is the Community Economic Mobilization Initiative statewide. But no, I think, John, you did a great job. I don't have anything to add if Aaliyah does, though.
No, I agree. John did a great job summarizing everything we reviewed.
Great. Um, room two was um Gabby Alvarez and Richard Vaughn. Thank you mu- so much for joining us. Richard, Richard was on our um advisory board, actually the steering committee gave us some really good feedback. Um, as we're putting indicators together, um, and Zav. Anyone from that group want to report back?
I can share a little bit and then open it up if my colleagues want to add. Um, so within our group, uh, I guess. Nothing was necessarily. Overly surprising, which I guess if someone had co-authored the report and someone on the steering committee, that might make sense. But um, it was relatively in line with what we've been.
Think we may have lost Gabby. Does someone else in that group want to want to pick up where she left off?
I I can jump in, Jessica. I think we lost Gabby and Chris. Uh, hopefully not for a while. Uh, but yeah, no, uh, kind of what Gabriella was just saying is that, you know, wasn't uh too thrown off by the data is being shared and we uh just because I had seen it. Um, but we were just excited that the data was being shared and that this was put together and that we actually do have. A visual representation of what is going on in the county and uh kind of something for all of us to gather around and. And pull together and uh, you know, partner to figure out, you know, what the next steps are. What can we do to try to, you know, affect some type of change? Uh, you know, to move some of these indicators in the right way.
Zav, do you have anything to to add to that before we move on to the next room?
Yeah, something that I wanted to add as a as a question that's outstanding for me. Um, and I understand that it's probably not something that's like within the scope of. Um, what the report is doing right now, but. Wondering about to what extent um money is being reinvested in the region in a way that um. Like promotes equitable outcomes and the example that I used. Um, because I come from a tenants' rights background that's thinking about like. You're paying your landlord rent, you're doing a lot of work to make that money. Um, and you, you know, you pay them the rent and do they install new windows so that? It doesn't leak in the rain? Do they get rid of the rat problem? Or do they just keep the money and put it somewhere else or invest it somewhere else? Um, and so. Yeah, the question is like, there's all the, what, how much of the economic activity in the region? Um, is being reinvested for the benefit of especially low-wage earners living here?
Thank you. Um, how about from room four, Brenda, Ned, Rose? Do any of you want to share? Share about your conversation?
Rose, would you be willing to share? I.
Yeah, I'll share a little bit. At least from my perspective. Um, I'm a huge champion of business, government. And nonprofits working together to some, to solve some of these problems. Um, I asked for some feedback from those who'd lived here longer about. How the community built views the agricultural. Uh, the respect for the agricultural work that's done here. And then that kind of went off to a discussion about equity in housing. Because housing is a big driver of all of this. Um, you know, if you're not, you don't feel welcome and and able to afford your own community. How can you support? What's going on around you, let alone if, let alone what's going on in your own family?
Brenda, do you want to add to that?
Uh, yeah, um, exactly like uh what Rose just mentioned, we were very focused on generationally, what are these changes that we're going to? Be seen or are we already seeing in terms of uh youth in the area that are growing up um? In this agricultural agriculturally rich area and are they staying around? Are they deciding to move? What is this looking like as well as with housing, um, being able to afford staying in the community? Um, how many of the youth that are growing up here and growing up into adulthood and um. Acquiring jobs, how many of them are actually being able to stay within the area, um, even if they um. If it's something that they want, can they afford to stay in the area? And uh, yeah, that's uh, we were focusing on generational um changes that we might be seeing um. Like Rose mentioned.
Yeah, and both Brenda Brenda works with entrepreneurs in the area and trying to get them established and Rose works with nonprofits and so both of them have a really good view on. What it looks like on the ground, um, like and Rose was giving some great examples like during the pandemic of some of the value that the nonprofits were providing just because the need was there. And it was not recognized and so, you know, they were given arrears, but it wasn't equal to uh what the gift was and I think this report. You know, it provides a great overview of the indicators and the metrics that we should be looking at to see where there is. Um, needs and changing um uh opportunities in in the area, but how do we get that to the ground? To the people that are actually doing this work? How do we actually translate that to the individual level? Um, because you know, there's a lot of unrecognized work that is there and in order for us to really move. Um, whether it's donors or public sector or any sorts of funds, there kind of needs to be a shift. You know, for these metrics to show that value. To at an organizational level in a way. So how do we, how do we bridge that gap? How do we keep this conversation? Uh, going to a a place where we can build trust that we know that those dollars. Are having value and what types of value we're we're actually generating through through this work. are having value and what types of value we're actually generating through, through this work?
Thank you all. Anyone from Eric Lady Melanie, do you have any insights to share with the group?
Yeah, it was great to, to, you know, get a chance to speak with Lady and with Melanie. We went over our kind of first impressions of the, of the study, right? Several of us had seen it before. Melanie brought up a great point about like confirmation bias and like looking at data to kind of reassure our own assumptions, which I thought was really self-aware. I do this too. So I thought that was really wonderful. Lady brought up that she really loved seeing the undocumented communities counted and addressed kind of in the study, right? That unfortunately doesn't happen all the time, despite the fact that they play a significant part in our local economy. I kind of reiterated that my earlier point about my desire to see local government interface with this kind of mindset a lot more and how challenging it is to just change anything. Like, I'm really happy to see Richard Vaughn on the call, right? Our Economic Development Manager for the County Monterey. And that being said, right, it's still really challenging to shift the way that local government works in any, in any way, really. Right? So it's an ongoing effort that we're going to have to do every year. And then more broadly, I kind of slipped into my Salinas pride hat and talked about the desire to see the LGBTQ community represented in kind of how we track this data. A couple of years ago, CRLA's California Rural Legal Assistance did the Seminole Central Coast Transgender Needs Assessment, which highlighted that, I'm blanking on the figure, it was like 25% of respondents said that they had an annual income of less than $25,000 a year, which sounds shocking, but really corresponds to the wages in agriculture, right? And so a lot of people could say that, oh, well, you know, we are represented because they are tracking the Latino community and because several of us happen to be both queer and Latino, Latinx. But it is, I think, important to highlight the fact that those of us who are living at the intersection of being both Latino, both queer and trans happen to, you know, have significant challenges that also need to be addressed. So yeah, but maybe something, something to be added moving forward.
Hi, everyone. I want to apologize for disappearing for a second. The power is still out, went out on the UC Santa Cruz campus, which cut out the internet for a period of time. I think it was just about the point when John was talking about the importance of digital equity and broadband access in San Benito County. So we need it also in Santa Cruz County. I remember we're fine. Anyway, I'm back. I'm not sure where we are in the debriefing. Thank you for carrying on without me.
And I also lost power, Chris. So we were both out, but we're both back.
Lady or Melanie, anything to add to what Eric shared?
No, that was great. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, Linda of Mahnoor, do you have any, any thoughts from your small but mighty group?
Linda, did you want to take that one and then I'll add? We can't hear you. I think you're on mute.
I was actually gonna turn it over to Lee. Lee, would you summarize what we talked about?
I don't see her. I think she might have left.
Yeah, I think she might have jumped off.
Oh, okay. Well, we talked, Mahor, go ahead. You start.
Well, I think that one of the, one of the things that I really liked, we ended up talking about was Pajaro. And I know Linda, you were the expert, but Linda mentioned that the population in Pajaro has decreased by 40% recently. It has happened gradually. So we were just trying to like, figure it out, like, what are the main reasons? Was it the floods? Was it, is it because the housing cost is really high? Or, and I know Linda, you also mentioned that there is a lot of jobs, but there's not enough people. So I think that that's something that I'm still thinking about. Did you want to add to that, Linda?
No, I was gonna ask about declines in population by race. And if that was something that was going on regionally, because I know EG is often looking for workers. And so perhaps you could, Chris, you could offer something on population changes by race? Or Gabriella?
Yeah, I don't know. Gabby, do you have that at the top of your mind? We did look a bit at different population change by race in the region. And broadly, it's, you know, the increasing population of people of color in the region and declining non-Hispanic white over time. But I think one of the things that we could look more at, and this has come up in several of our study sessions, is really trying to understand a bit more, you know, migration patterns by age as well as by race. One of the issues that many people brought up is, you know, young people not being able to stay in the region and moving out because of the high cost of housing and more limited job opportunities here. And that may be part of what's happening in Pajaro. I wasn't aware of that population decline specifically, right, in Pajaro itself. But yeah, that's something we can look more at.
Sorry. I know that Lee also mentioned that, because she works in Santa Cruz. So the school enrollment has decreased in Santa Cruz as well. So and it's because a lot of the parents can't afford to live there anymore. So.
Thank you, Mahor. Yeah.
Well, and that's actually an issue, you know, overall of an aging population too, both nationally and in the state. Where, in fact, if we didn't have immigration to the US, we'd have a declining population. That's part of what has kept up our population of both children of recent immigrants and new immigrants coming in. And that's it. I mean, that's actually a big challenge in other countries around the world. You know, I think, you know, having a stable population is probably really helpful for our population, you know, our environment and economy overall. But declining population can be a real challenge too.
So, Chris, I'll challenge you. Do we actually have an immigration system here in the United States?
I just said, we have important members of our community who are immigrants. Don't comment on our immigration system or lack thereof. Real need for comprehensive immigration reform, of course. Thank you for that, Rose. I'm not going to touch too much of that today. Actually, I was really appreciative, John, of you raising the issue of, you know, disparate local government revenue. And that's something we're really going to look at. And I had actually done a report earlier on Prop 13 in particular, and the value of a split rule. And, you know, there are different arguments for residential populations and, you know, not wanting to price people out of homes with increasing property values. But commercial is really a completely different argument. And in my view, there's no reason not to tax commercial properties at their market value. I mean, it's just, I think, basic economic sense.
We discussed that explicitly in our group, so. Erica was all up on it, even better than me.
Right.
Did anyone have a question or area that came up that they wanted to run by Dr. Benner or Gabby before, before we move on? Zav, I feel like you might have had a question in your group or something that had come up as a question.
I can repeat it, although since Gabriella was in our group, I'm not sure if, if Dr. Benner would have more to say. But the main question was that we, something that we discussed was, to what extent are economic benefits of current growth being reinvested in the region rather than being invested elsewhere or hoarded somewhere else? And Gabriella did say that, you know, there's issues with being able to actually track where money is going because ownership structures aren't always clear with a lot of, a lot of businesses. So I just think that's, I would just raise it because I think it's an important part of making sure that, that continuous growth benefits people at the bottom of the economic ladder.
Yeah, I think that's a really important point. And, you know, there, there are arguments connected to that about the value of supporting locally-owned businesses, that money tends to circulate more in a local economy than some of the larger multinational corporations. And, you know, that's a really important debate. But there are also other arguments why, you know, large corporations can be, you know, a beneficial aspect of a local economy in part because they can bring in additional resources and expertise that, you know, local businesses may not have, have access to. But I think that's a really important debate and discussion we should be paying attention to and don't have very good data on, as Gabby, you know, very accurately said.
Ned, what was the question you had that you didn't know if the study covered, something that we discussed?
It was about the retention of the local populace. Like, are we really tracking how the residency rate of people and try to get a sense of how many people have to leave the area, not by choice, but just because of the economics that aren't able to make it? They're not able to make it work here?
Yeah. We, yeah, that's come up in multiple study sessions. And I don't have an easy answer to that at the moment. It's not the data we've looked at yet, but it's on our to-do list. Stay tuned. There will be a new report out at some point in the next year about migration in our region. Any other questions or comments or priorities that you want to lift up for us? Going forward?
I wanted to raise one thing, Chris. Put my Ed hat on here. We've had a severe decline in elementary school and high school populations to the point that schools are going to be forced to think about closing schools, laying off staff. There was some talk about merging schools. I'll tell you the cycles through every, you know, every number of years. But it's pretty severe in this area at the moment.
Yeah, that's a really interesting issue to be addressing. And, you know, again, partially if it's part of a long-term trend of aging of the population, you know, that could be a very reasonable thing, that maybe we don't need as many schools. If it's related to lack of affordability and families can't afford to be here and people moving out, kind of, that's a different set of issue. But, you know, one thing I would point to is that there are opportunities to address our housing crisis that local schools are a really key part of the solution. And there are efforts that have been developed. My understanding is Soldad is one of the places in our region, but I know San Jose is an important one. I think there's some other efforts in Santa Cruz of actually providing workforce housing for teachers in school properties where the properties aren't needed as much for the classrooms or other teaching needs. And to the fact, to the extent that schools may need to be closed, you know, prime public land for affordable housing could be really important part of that solution.
I'll raise one other heresy in your department. I saw a post today that said, if K-12 education is free, why aren't our state community colleges and colleges free?
Yeah, I'm a huge advocate of free higher education. At least debt-free higher education. I think there are arguments to really kind of targeting those resources. But, you know, it's important to recognize that that has changed over time as the demographics of our state have changed over time. You know, my father got his education as a medical doctor at UCSF. You know, basically for free. You know, 50 years ago now. And people going to University of California 50 years ago, tuition was, was very, very low. And today it's, you know, much, much higher with a population that's many more people of color. And that, you know, we can trace that to shifting priorities in state expenditures in the 80s and 90s towards mass incarceration. And there was a period of time when we were spending more on prisons in the state than on higher education. And, and that's even with tuition going up over that time to help cover the costs of higher education. So, you know, it's a way that kind of race intersects with nearly all issues in our society of, you know, what do we see as a priority? And I think we should drastically reduce the cost of higher education. And starting with community colleges, I should say, by the way, I sit at the University of California. Yeah, I have amazing community college system in this state and it is relatively low cost. And I think that's great and can be made free. And our CSU system, I think, is really, really important. But also UCs, I agree. And there's, you know, a strong, strong economic arguments for why having access to higher education that's affordable has economic benefits down the road.
That you missed when the power went out was we were talking about, you know, how do we actually make the connection from this report and the indicators to businesses on the ground, entrepreneurs and nonprofits? And the teacher conversation kind of brought up a thought that, you know, one of the ways maybe next steps for these reports is, you know, there are current sectors, jobs that are actually completely undervalued, teachers being one of them. You know, healthcare workers. And I wonder if there's work to be done in analyzing the precarity of those groups as indicators for how solid we are, you know, we might, you know, if we can really help identify what the problems, issues that those folks are having to face and understand how, you know, why are our school, you know, what is the precarity of not only our teachers, but the schools themselves? That can really help provide some value of like where we should be focusing our time and our efforts and our funds.
Yeah. When you mentioned the private sector connection and some of these issues, it made me think of a really positive example in our region, which is, you know, many people know Measure Q that was on the Monterey County ballot the last election, you know, would have had a parcel tax to pay for early childhood education. Most of the chambers of commerce in Monterey County endorsed it. And it was the businesses really recognizing, I think, that investing in the future of our workforce has economic payoffs 20 years down the road as well as current parents, if they feel confident about leaving their kids with high-quality, well-paid childcare providers can bring more people into the workforce. And again, it's this really important connection. Again, I've seen childcare investment is not a nice-to-have. Like, that's an economic development priority that we should be looking at. And, you know, many private sector leaders in our region get that particular issue. But I think there are, you know, other discussions that we need to have with our private sector leaders in this region. And your point about really lifting up the precarity of large sectors of our workforce, I think is really important. Any other points that we missed when our power went out? That you want to lift up or any other final? Final feedback before I turn it to Jessica to close this out?
So, Chris, what's next after all these listening sessions?
Well, I mean, I can say a few things that the institute is, you know, doing as ongoing work already. And then maybe I'll ask Jessica to talk a little bit more about MBEP's work and how we pull it together. You know, we're learning a lot from these discussions and part of it's about building relationships and connections for ongoing work. You know, at the institute, we're serving as kind of long-term advisors to the Salinas Inclusive Economic Development Initiative. So it's really trying to help build the capacity of community-based organizations to be, you know, full partners in economic development, decision-making in the region and building some of their efforts. Part of that work and work and support in the region as a whole is we're producing a series of reports on solidarity economics, really as a framework that understands the importance of investing in our mutuality as an economic development driver and how that framework can apply in different sectors. So we have a public version out now on housing. But we're doing another one on public health that will see the light of day any day. Let's call it a month. Promise it within the next month. And then also working one on childcare specifically on the education sector. And also on how we think about public finance and public revenue for, for local governments. All of those will be coming out in the coming year. We're also doing some research specifically on conditions of African-Americans in our region and really trying to lift up, you know, sort of opportunities and challenges and working with our African-American leadership in the region. And then also particularly on, on housing. And MBEP has done a, you know, really wonderful white paper on housing in the region. I really encourage people to look at that. One of the things we're trying to do is, you know, help talk more about social housing and public housing, bringing housing out of the market. There's a bunch of reasons why markets don't work very well in housing. And I think we need to talk a lot more about, about public housing. When done smart and done well, can be a really important economic development driver. And so we're doing some studies of land in the region, publicly-owned land and potential vacant land for public housing sites or other social housing. So keep an eye out for all those kind of reports and really happy to be in dialogue with any of you here about ways that our research capacities and training capacities About ways that our research capacities and training capacities at the institute might be. Might be helpful for work that you're doing. And I think in terms of this specific kind of report. We'll probably revisit this in about a year to decide whether it's appropriate to do another sort of large-scale indicator report for the region, whether we want to do it every two years or every three years. But Jessica, let me turn it back to you to talk a bit more about from MBEP's side. What you say. And I'll just say, it's been such a pleasure and treat to be partnered with MBEP on on this project. They've they've been great partners and. You know, we're looking forward to continuing that that collaboration.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for taking the time to join us here. As far as what's next with the report, I I'm not sure of specific plans for the report itself. I'll have to. Kind of turn that over to Tara in the future to share out what's next. But I do know that the information in the report is being utilized to inform some of the work that we're doing with the Regions Rise Together. Investment Plan Blueprint and the Uplift Central Coast. Project that that MBEP is is heavily involved with. So stay tuned for more information on on both of those initiatives. I know that as we speak, the Regions Rise Together. Kind of 2.0 Investment Plan Blueprint is being worked on, so that'll that'll come out. I I believe that the target for that is sort of midsummer, so June, July. Is is sort of the timeline for that. So stay tuned for more information on all of that. And then I also just wanted to highlight. For those not yet registered, we are holding our annual regional economic outlook. Coming up on Friday, May 3rd, that will be held at the Embassy Suites Monterey Bay and Seaside. It's a half-day program and registration is up now. I'll drop a link for y'all here in the chat. And it can also be found on our website under the events tab. So hope to see you all there. And thank you again for taking the time out, everyone, to be a part of this important discussion. And thank you so much. Gabriella and and Dr. Benner for posting.
Thank you all and we'll be in touch.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Take care.